And the other one. And are eligible to apply for a camp club support. Do we have that or is the puzzle one application? Down.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February 24th, 2025, scheduled board meeting for the Mill Creek Township School District Board of Directors. Today, we are meeting at the Mill Creek Education Center. While the public is encouraged to attend in person, we will continue to stream the meetings live on YouTube. And all the meetings will be recorded for the future, for the purpose of future viewing. And also view this evening's agenda as well as several additional informational items on our website, www.mtsd.org. Agendas are posted online 48 hours prior to the advertised meeting as well as being physically posted 48 to 72 hours prior to the advertised meeting in the display case. Posted on the exterior of the Mill Creek Education Center. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. Also like to remind all speakers, court team members and board members to speak clearly and distinctly into their microphones so you can be heard by all of our attendees this evening. Whether they are here in person or reviewing us on YouTube. Can I have real call, Mrs. Connor?
Mr. Brink.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Ms. Philbeck.
Here.
Mr. Kobilka.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
President.
Ms. Nusham.
Here.
Ms. Pasquale.
Here.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Ms. Winchell.
Here.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
President.
Attorney Senate.
Here.
Thank you. 1.02 executive session announcement. An executive session was held on February the 10th after our committee of the whole meeting. For the purpose of personnel and litigation, that litigation include included the following. One point, I'm sorry, 1094 CD 2022. This is last name. I'm sorry, Prozan versus MTSD removal case 1094 CD 2022 Commonwealth Court. Prozan and Aleota versus MTSD Sunshine 2022 12699 Erie County Court of Common Pleas. Aleota versus MTSD 105 MC 02025 US District Court for Western District of Pennsylvania. Aleota versus MTSD 10343 2024 Erie County Court of Common Pleas. Uh, Stoops versus MTSD EEOC 533 2023 02178. 124-163 US District Court of Western District of Pennsylvania. Angela Crest Trust versus MTSD 11510-2013 Erie County Court of Common Pleas. Cherry Joe New versus MTSD 11519-2024 Erie County Court of Common Pleas. Madron Sullivan versus MTSD 11823 2016 Erie County Court of Common Pleas. And an executive session was held this evening prior to this meeting on February 24th for the purpose of litigation and personnel litigation included. Uh, Prozan versus MTSD 1094 CD 2022 Commonwealth Court. Prozan and Aleota versus MTSD Sunshine 2022 12699 Erie County Court of Common Pleas. Aleota versus MTSD 105 MC-2025 US District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. And Minard versus Sullivan versus MTSD 11823 2016 Erie County Court of Common Pleas. Moving on to item three, 1.03 approval of this evening's board agenda. Can I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda? Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, nay, passes. Please join me and stand 1.04 pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of China as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
1.05 is the Mill Creek Education Foundation partnership, and I believe we have Chris Huber on the line. Chris?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about the Mill Creek Education Foundation and our effort to support Mill Creek students. I want to begin with a special thank you to the Mill Creek Association of Education Secretaries for their gift to the MEF grant fund. We're so appreciative of this gift that will benefit grants that will be awarded in April of this year. The MEF grant applications are available on our website in the what we support tab. The next round of MEF applications are due April 1st. The Bri Humble and Kind Foundation challenged MEF to raise $500 by Thanksgiving. And they matched the amount so that we could purchase winter outerwear for Mill Creek students. We've been providing boots, winter coats, hats and gloves for K through 12 students with these funds. With a distribution from the MEF Bri Humble Fund last year, we were able to give each elementary school library the book Bri and Me, A True Story of a Rescue Rooster's Journey. On February 11th, Tracy Elementary had a special virtual visit with the author Camille Lykate and her adopted rooster Bri. The true story of the chick found walking the streets of New York City led to the book and her kids for Positive Change Initiative. This has led to several projects at Tracy for students to engage and share positive behavior and suggest ways to improve things for others. I attended the virtual visit and was in Brianna Elder's former classroom with her parents Darla and Tim. We're working together to try to find ways to fulfill their wish to support Mill Creek teachers morale and mental health with their MEF fund created in memory of their daughter. Two easy ways to support this fund, save your canned tabs for MEF and by donating recyclable items to at Lincoln Recycling to benefit the MEF Bri Humble Fund. We had an open call on Facebook, Instagram and LinkedIn for nominations for MEF bright spots. I.e. an MTSD employee that is welcoming, kind, inclusive, positive, supportive. There were more than 100 nominations from colleagues, parents and students. In a random draw of names, we chose 10 to receive Hugo Comfort boxes. The following were selected. King Cunningham at Asbury, Leslie Sharing at Chestnut Hill, Abby Nelson at JS Wilson, Mackenzie O'Connor, MEC. Veronica Notton at MIHS. Carol Wenzel at MIHS, Megan Minger Elliott Tracy, Pete Buas at Walnut Creek, Amy Strum at Walnut Creek and Kevin O'Connor at McDowell. There'll be one more opportunity to nominate someone in April. The MEF bright spots started in 2020 during the pandemic as a morale booster when nominators and nominees received a comfort box mailed to their home. A reminder from Exile Seniors that the MEF scholarship application closes on March 17th at midnight. Students must complete a profile ongoing Mary and will be alerted to their eligibility for specific scholarships, both MEF and national scholarships. A link to individual MEF scholarships is on our website in the scholarship information tab. I just looked to see what MEF scholarships do not have applications as of today. Bernie Lyons is for an Erie County VOTEC student. Carly Cummings is for a student participating in swimming or water polo in college. Hallburn Restefoe Loop Architecture Scholarship, Karen Cunningham Art Scholarship, Girls' Varsity Soccer Scholarship and the Petuso Technology Scholarship. You can read the eligibility criteria on the scholarship information page of the MEF website. All MTSD students are eligible to apply for financial support to participate in a camp, club, sport, or become a member of the YMCA, try a new activity, et cetera. Through the Elle's Piece of the Puzzle Fund application. The link to the application is on our website in the funds tab and are accepted all year long. I wanted to make you aware of upcoming events that benefit MEF funds. On Sunday, March 2nd, at the JPT Foundation Event Center, there will be a fundraiser for the Marty Coverman Scholarship. And on Saturday, March 29th at noon, the Red Fox Inn is holding the charity bowling tournament at Green Garden Lanes to benefit the Michael Palermo Scholarship Fund. And the last thing, Wednesday, March 5th is Give Education Day. This is a 24 hour virtual fundraising event hosted by Alumni Nations to support K through 12 education foundations. The platform for giving is similar to Erie Gives Day, except that the minimum gift is $10. The link to giveeducation.com will be on the MEF website in each of our social media platforms. When you get to the site, choose find your cause, type Mill Creek in the search bar and MEF will appear with a donate button. There are only 49 foundations participating and your support is appreciated. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chris. We go on to agenda item two, 2.01 school board meeting minutes of January the 27th, 2025. And 2.02 committee of the whole meeting minutes of February the 10th, 2025. Can I have a motion to accept those two meeting minutes?
Okay.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, nay, motion passes. Item three visitor comments. We provide the opportunity for Mill Creek Township residents and taxpayers to address the board for up to three minutes to make comments concerning any item that is in front of the board for action this evening or for an upcoming board meeting. Details can be found on the MTSD website with each meeting announcement. Same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. If you'd like to address the board this evening, please complete the form provided at the entrance to this room at this time, including your name, address and topic. And then submit the form to Ms. O'Connor here, the board secretary. Once called upon, the speakers will then be asked to state their name and topic before speaking. As guests of the board, you are encouraged to speak about matters related to the programs, services and operations of the Mill Creek Township School District. Please remember, we are prohibited from discussing specific employees, jobs, performance or pending litigation. As reminders to the board and to the public, the board will not engage in a discussion with the public speakers during the monthly board meetings. Is obligation to discuss with the entire board only the matters posted in public agenda for the sake of transparency. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or individual character attacks as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this type of public forum exists. Thank you for your cooperation. We appreciate your input and feedback. Our speaker this evening is Mr. Aleota. Topic, oath of office and legal issues. Mr. Aleota, you have three minutes. Mr. Aleota, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Board, Administration, students, taxpayers, and parents. The Oath of Office is the foundation of our U.S. and Pennsylvania constitutional republic. Whether public officials know it or not, they can be removed from office for violating that oath of office. Attorneys can have their license to practice law revoked. Let me share with the public, there are some very interesting answers during depositions taken as far so far relative to my $3 million federal complaint about illegal litigation, illegal use of taxpayer funds for over five years. Some of the upcoming depositions, Solicitor's Senate, March 4th, Attorney Wechler, which is the follow-up from his first, March 10th, Aaron O'Toole is March 18th. These should be really interesting. Some uncomfortable questions I have asked for the past 10 or 15 years. And now, these questions will be answered in federal court as we continue to depositions and discovery prior to the jury trial. Has anyone ever noticed the local media has been dead lately? They really don't want to touch the Trump administration and Doge or the Aleota federal complaint. But let me digress right now. If you haven't viewed the 1993 movie, The Firm, starring Tom Cruise as a neophyte attorney in a corrupt and deceptive prestigious-type law firm, I strongly suggest every school board director and every taxpayer view it. I saw it about 10 years ago, and last week I saw it again. Is it really art imitating real life? Let me share the premise and my own thoughts. Money laundering, tax fraud, false and fraudulent legal fees invoices in which the young attorney figures out what is going on and blows the whistle by the firm's corrupt and deceptive devices. Bottom line. Okay, thank you.
Any other speakers like to speak this evening? Okay, hearing none, let's move on. Item four, old business, old business. 4.01 is the PSBA Board Self-Assessment. I know last meeting, I asked Mr. Brink to find out some information about that. He did a great job and given me some feedback. You want to do any comments first, Wade, or just take it?
No, just go ahead.
Yeah, so basically Wade had talked to PSBA, and the process is that self-assessment, they'll forward it out to the to the board. We roughly will have two weeks to complete it on that. It'll take them two or three weeks to do the assessment and compile the information, and then they'll schedule a time to come back to do a presentation with with the board on their findings. Did this a few years ago, then COVID hit, and then we had a new board, so we kind of passed. So I know Wade had really been the contact from now, from this point on, you know, I'll take it from here, but we're looking at it March 1st, so we can kind of do the self-assessment before we get too far deep into the budget process, I guess. So Wade, Wade, if you want to talk to the contact tomorrow, so we're ready to roll. She, I verified all your email addresses, they're all accurate, so be looking to get that towards the end of the week or first thing next week. You have two weeks to complete it. I ask everyone to participate. We've always had 100% participation, and the ones that've gone through it the last time, I think it was pretty, pretty good exercise. They'll come back, and if you look at all the steps of a school, you know, governance, leadership, things like that, they rate the, they rate the overall board collectively, then talk individually about strengths and weaknesses and opportunities, so. Hey, any questions on that? So again, that survey will be delivered out to your MTSD boxes, if not this weekend first thing, and I just ask everyone to respond, and then I'll probably get updates halfway through, so if you don't, I'll be reaching out to give you a little nudge, so. Hey, thanks. Any other old business? Okay, moving on. Item five, Instruction and Student Services, Ms. Lynchell.
Thank you. I have five items to bring forward from committee to ask for approval this evening. 5.01 is the 2025 Spring Athletic Schedules. There are 14 spring athletic schedules attached to the agenda. Schedules include track and field, tennis, baseball, softball, lacrosse, and volleyball. 5.02, the CANVA for Education Subscription Service Multi-Year. Approval is requested for this three-year agreement for use by students, faculty, and staff at no cost to the district. The agreement can be terminated by the district at any time with 30 days' notice. 5.03 Approval is requested for this agreement with the Community College of Beaver County for our high school students to have the opportunity to participate in on-campus or online classes. Cost is the responsibility of each participant. The agreement auto-renews annually and can be terminated with 90 days' notice by either party. 5.04 is the Alternative Education Proposal. Approval is requested for this proposal for our district to take over the alternative education program. We currently contract with Perseus House for 12 seats in this program. The attachment details the cost savings for the district taking over the program and expanding it from 12 students to 24 students. At the committee meeting, there was also discussion of soft costs that would be necessary with housing this program at Ridgefield. Mr. O'Toole followed up with an email on Monday, the 17th, defining specifics on those soft costs that total approximately $15,000. And finally, 5.05 is the 2025-26 Annual Notifications of Student Code of Conduct. Approval is requested for this for the 25-26 school year, as noted in the attachment. I'd like to make a motion to bring forward 5.01 through 5.05.
Can I have a, can I have a, I'm sorry, you brought forward as a motion?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, nay, she passes. We've got an item six, Personnel Policy Committee. Mr. Dean. Mr. Brink. I'm sorry, missed the file. Not that easy.
Know what happened.
Sorry about that. Mr. Brink.
All right, we have three items this evening. Item 6.01, Policy 916 Volunteers Final Reading. Make a motion, we approve 6.01.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, nay, she passes.
Item 6.02, the February 24th, 2025 Personnel Board Report. At Bell Valley, we have a recommendation for a Title I Educational Assistant. Also have a recommendation for a Grade III Teacher. We have a leave of absence for a Grade III Teacher. At Grandview, we have a resignation of a Special Education Assistant Autistic Support. At Tracy, we have a recommendation for a Title I Educational Assistant Part-Time. At Walnut Creek, we have a recommendation for a Special Educational Assistant Life Skill Support. At McDowell, we have a resignation of a Special Education Assistant Life Skill Support. We have a recommendation for a Special Education Teacher Learning Support. We also have a recommendation for a Math Teacher. Mill Creek Education Center, we have a resignation of a Track and Field Varsity Indoor/Outdoor Assistant Coach Sprints. We have a seventh-grade boys' basketball coach. We have a recommendation for three board-approved volunteers. First student employment activity from monitor to driver. We have the athletic supplements for 2024, 2025, and also athletic supplements for 2025, 2026. I'll make a motion that we approve the Personnel Board Report.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, nay, she passes.
Item 6.03, the Revised Job Descriptions that we discussed at the committee meeting. I'll make a motion that we approve item 6.03.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, nay, she passes. Thank you, thank you. We've got an item seven, Month End Close Reports, Mr. O'Toole.
Thank you. 7.01 and 7.02 are the Enrollment Summary and Investment Summary. Those are just informational items. Are there any questions regarding either one of those? Hearing none, I would ask to take 7.03 through 7.07 as a block with 7.03 is the approval of the Student Activity Officers, 7.04 Budget Transfers, 7.05 is our Bond Summary Reports, 7.06 is the Treasurer Summary, and 7.07 are the Financial Reports for January.
Okay, I'd like to move forward 7.03 through 7.07, and have a motion to accept those.
Motion?
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, nay, she passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on to Finance and Operations. Item eight, I'll take care of that, and I'll bring this in a form of two different blocks. First block will be the largest, so 8.01 is the Prescott Water Testing, and that's required for the weekly pool water testing for 25, 26, and 27, for a cost of $3,016 for 25, $3,016 for 26, $3,432 for 27. Again, as all these items are brought forward, they were all discussed in committee, a deep discussion, so move forward to the board group this evening. We're going to go from 8.01 to 8.03 at this point in time. CHAH Extra Work Authorization for the amount of $19,800, that's 8.03. 8.04 is the E-Rate, and looking for approval for purchase wireless switches, UPS, and networking equipment to update service at various Mill Creek Township School District buildings, and that is $283,307.92 for the purchase. $169,984.75 will be reimbursed through the E-Rate Program. 8.05 is the Account Payable Report. Those include reports of the Account Payable Report as well as payroll reports for January the 24th and February 7th and February 21st of 2025. 8.06 is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Single Audit. We'll be looking for approval to accept that report and single audit report. The attachment is there for. 8.07, the Subgrant Contract for Implementation of the Individuals with Disability Education Act, the amount of $1,507,703.80. And also 8.08, the Subgrant Contract for the Use of Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Section 619 Pass Through Funds, that is $16,060. 8.09 is the Erie County Technical School Budget. Mr. Lindner did talk extensively about that at our committee meeting. That will be forward as well this evening for the vote. As well as 8.10, Mill Creek Township School District Student Activity Account Officers 24-25 School Year. I'd like to take 8.01 and then 8.03 through 8.010. Can I have a motion?
Motion?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, nay, she passes. Going back to the other item, 8.02 is the Camera Project. During the committee meeting, we had quite a conversation about the cameras project. I know we asked Mr. O'Toole to give the board some additional information at that point. You know, it was 10 years, he had provided some information that you all had an opportunity to review, both for the three-year and for the five-year options. The current item on the board is to outline, first of all, this proposal outlines a plan to replace all existing cameras and to add additional units. It includes costs associated with licensing fees and hardware only, with a licensing fee covering the duration of 10 years. It's current. Although the company does not provide an insured warranty, opting for a shorter term would result in annual expenditure of approximately $24,000. Following the approval of the hardware and software, the district will proceed to solicit bids for the installation of the cameras. In summary, upon completion of this project, all of our facilities will have the comprehensive camera coverage identified by the safety team as necessary. So I guess before we, can I get a motion on that, and we'll turn?
Motion, President.
Can I have a second? Let's have, okay, thank you. And let's have a discussion. Mr. O'Toole, can you bring us up to speed? I know we had a lot of conversation committee, you've sent the information out, and maybe kind of bring us back to where we ended at the committee meeting.
Yeah. First and foremost is that there was a three, five-year, and 10-year quotes that were requested, and those were provided last Monday, I believe, from two different vendors at the end of the day. In addition to the week prior, I think I sent out the original quotes that we had had, but these had been revised. There were a number of questions asked in regards to whether the the equipment, regarding 10 years specifically, is if the equipment goes bad, or if it need, if it's outdated, whether it be replaced through the 10-year warranty with Rambus. And the answer to that question is yes. I had provided the terms and conditions for which that is there, as well as working with Rambus, there was a fact, a fast fact sheet. And it, just like most software, just so we're on the same page, I know a question was asked about software specifically and updating that software, that will naturally occur with no additional charge from this point forward, regardless of the timeline that we choose, whether it be three, five, or 10 years. I would like to illustrate a little bit more about the purchasing process used overall, and it all started with our security team identifying functionality that was desired that come from these cameras. And part of that is utilizing AI function. And if you look at the enterprise license for Rambus, I mean, it has facial recognition, crowd counting, et cetera, and you'll be able to track individuals in within the building using the camera system itself. So first, the needs and the wants and everything that we needed was identified. From there, we reached out to some local vendors, and we had several companies that were, that were referred, that we were referred to, excuse me, that were the leading in that these functionality areas. And, you know, Verkata, Rambus being two of those as we're going through. So from, at that point in time, we ruled out Verkata because of a security data compromise issue, and it left us with Rambus. And at that moment in time, it became purchasing. So we had identified the functionality that we wanted. We vetted out several different companies in regards to that functionality, and that we had ended on one. And then from a purchasing standpoint, we had contacted Rambus specifically and talked about bidding, and from, it was, come back to our understanding is they, they use specific resellers that work directly with Rambus and some that are indirect with Rambus. So we chose to get quotes from, which I believe is the two direct resellers and not those that are indirect, cutting out the margins of the middleman, shall we say, for lack of better expression, and using a co-op program. And with that said, you could see what the end result of those were. We did three, five, and 10-year versus with two different vendors. I also provided the analysis of what the difference was. So I think at this moment in time, I mean, I just want to give a little bit of, understand, a little bit more of an understanding of how we arrived at the end result of where we are, and it all starts with security teams' functionality. These were, I mean, this platform, from my understanding, security cameras are very specific to the software at the end of the day, and this software specifically has the functionality that is desired. And here we are today. I did provide a number of other information through email. Are there any questions?
Well, I know, Aaron, you know, some of the concern was heard, you know, about the bid process. I know that that was part of Pope Star.
Correct.
Okay. Just maybe make a few comments just for the public about. Maybe make a few comments for the public about that.
Yeah, CoStars or there's a number of co-op purchasing programs across the country. And we are partners in all of those. And the point of that is it essentially the state or the overarching authority that is overseeing that co-op program bids this out already. And you go in and you're able to meet the bidding thresholds in working with this co-op program. The idea behind that is it's cheaper to go in that direction because you're not working all the advertising costs and all the time going through the whole bidding process. The other side of that, which is what we typically do, however, is it gives you a maximum amount. And we always like to get price points from multiple vendors to ensure that they're closely together. Because we technically didn't send a bid out. So that overall, that is what a co-op program really is, is you're avoiding the the costs associated with going with the long and tedious bidding process. And when you're using pulling it from different vendors to make sure that the price points are good, I think it can be a useful tool as we're moving forward. And specifically in these types of situations where the vendor themselves work with direct resellers at the end of the day. And you'd be limited in who would bid on it anyhow.
So I know Mike Cabalke had some, you know, questions and asked for some shorter terms. Aaron's had supplied them, so you want to ask him, ask some questions?
Yeah, could we, for the record, announce the cost of the three, the cost of the five, and then the cost that we know is the million plus on the ten?
Yeah, the revised quotes that we had received is connect, I'll give it all to you. Connectivity was at nine hundred and eighty eight thousand. A five for a ten year term. A five year term was at seven hundred and fifty six thousand. Three year term was at six hundred and fifty five thousand. When you look down for the alternative vendor of Howard Industries, that your ten year term was at nine hundred and ninety eight thousand. Five year term at seven hundred and sixty four thousand. And a three year term at six hundred and seventy two thousand. So connectivity was slightly cheaper in each of those related to the overall cost. Depending on, well, it was slightly cheaper on all.
Thank you.
Mr. Old Tool, thank you so much for the job you did on the spreadsheet that is comparing apples to apples and trying to compare what it is that we're getting. So Rambus camera, cameras, we can't purchase those from Rambus. You go to a direct retailer. So what do we know about the two that are quoted here? As far as other districts that have used them, reliability, the chance of them still being here ten years from now? What do we know about their reputations? I guess it's, they're, they're very close in price.
Great question. We've used both vendors personally in conducting business over the past. I mean, we've used Howard Industries to do signs for us in the past. I mean, Haas signs a good example of one of those. And I mean, we just approved quotes for connectivity through our E rate, which we typically, they're always the lowest bid in our E rate every year as we're going forward. So internally, we've got, we've conducted business over the years with both. I would say from a technology standpoint, we've used connectivity more than we have with Howard. However, with that said, as well, Rambus does, from my understanding as well, Rambus does use these resellers to sell. The support that is going to be provided will be provided directly by Rambus. And I did hear a concern about ten years without an insured warranty. And let me allow it to explain what the difference of a warranty versus insured warranty is. Essentially, a company can provide a warranty that's valid as long as you're in business. An insured warranty is going to an insurance company and having a policy written in case they do go out of business. Technology is always one of those areas that is changing. I mean, tomorrow is different than today. Ten years is a long time when it comes to technology, which is why we asked for an insured warranty at that moment in time. Most likely, if anything, I would, I would guess, and again, we don't have a crystal ball to know this, but if Rambus probably wouldn't go under, they'd be bought out by another company that you'd hope would honor, should honor what we're going forward with. But I, I don't want to, my point being is I don't want to discredit the idea of ten years and technology is a long time.
Mr. Old Tool, on your Rambus fast facts, item one, the warranty, we're talking about warranty. And it was highlighted, if a camera reaches end of life, Rambus will replace it with the most recent equivalent make and model. Just expand on that a little bit for the board members and for the public.
Did you repeat that?
I just said in the fast fact sheet that you forwarded out to us, the board. Item one, warranty, you were talking, you were talking a little bit about the warranty. And in red, it said if a camera reaches end of life, Rambus will replace it with the most recent equivalent make and model. I just ask if you could expand on, you know, end of life and give us a few examples of that, what that may be.
If a specific model is no longer supported within that ten year period, Rambus will replace it with the updated model free of charge.
I just ask that because I know there's a question about, you know, things becoming obsolete and change and things like that, so. Okay. I know there's a lot of concern about the length of time, right? So Aaron has provided us some different ones. So any discussion on that? Mike, you've counted that. Mike, Sir Linder, you've counted that.
Got a couple follow ups. So obviously, they're going to upgrade their software over the life of the ten years. Does that include the upgrade in enhancements to the software? Or is that just a ten year, this software will work in the current capacity? Like, we're just going to keep bringing it up at security level. But we're not going to change the actual functionality of the software over ten years. So if you want enhanced functionality, because now we want this detection, then we're going to have to buy a new software license.
Good question.
All right, what's your next question?
How old are the current cameras?
They are, they range, I mean, some are over ten years old. At the end of the day, to the point that we have some that will be maintaining that are scheduled to be input into McDowell renovation.
I guess the better question is, how old is the software managing the cameras?
I don't know the exact age. I mean, it's outdated, from my understanding. Patrick, you know the answer to that?
Currently, the software we're using is no longer available, was bought out by Motorola. But we've been using it for, I think it's been twelve, fourteen years, pretty close to that, twelve, fourteen years we've been using. Some, and some cameras that are still working are fourteen years old.
Not so much worried about the camera. That's the cheapest part of the process and the easiest part to fix and replace. Comes down to software. What is it called? What is the, what is the half life of the software? And what are we getting in the software guaranteed upgrade over the ten years? Point B, we might get a new camera, but we're going to dumb it down to the software level that we've purchased. I also know that a lot of times when we see software companies get bought out by other software companies, they will, they will do exactly what they said. They will carry it to life expectancy, but they won't make any enhancements to that software because they want to move everything from their program, that legacy program to their next providing program.
We have the gentleman from Rambus here that could probably answer that.
Yeah. Could you go to the microphone?
Yeah, please come up here to the microphone. That'd be great, thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
So as far as, oh, sorry, my name's Garrett Fergie. I actually live in Edinburgh, Pennsylvania, so not far from you guys. My wife graduated from McDowell. I have family that goes to your school district, so I appreciate what you guys do. Never been to a school board meeting before. I have to give Joe, Patrick, Aaron, a lot of props for the vetting process. It's been over a year. Definitely put us through the paces. So to answer your question about software, the easiest way for me to explain it would be like your Netflix account. Like automatically movies, more movies come in and you decide if you're going to pay for your Netflix account. Our software is non proprietary, meaning we don't put it on your computer. We don't come into the district and install software. All of our software is based on the cloud, so everything is automatically uploaded. When we talk about a ten year license, you have a ten year warranty for the cameras, for the hardware. Question was asked about, you know, if the new camera comes out. So one of the camera models is a R two hundred. If an R two hundred E comes out and you have an R two hundred and it goes bad, we're no longer manufacturing the two hundred. We'll send you the the two hundred E at no additional charge. From a software perspective, it'll line up with that ten year warranty on the hardware and the software. You will get automatic updates monthly of new features. So some of the features that are included today is, you know, facial recognition, license plate recognition, color search, region search, people counting. If you want to know where Dr. Kavanaugh's sign went, you can create an inbounding box around that and see, you know, who put that sign there. It's, it's not the hardware, and that's been said, and it was said before, it's the software behind the scene. So there's a lot of camera companies out there. There's only a few that really do what we do and do it well. We went through the vetting process, super confident that, that these guys definitely did their job. And whatever license you guys go with, you know, it doesn't matter to me. I'll say that the ten years is the most cost effective. Three and five are also really good options. What's nice about the ten years, you have that warranty with the hardware and the software. You guys aren't going to touch this project for another ten years. If there's a problem with the camera, it'll automatically get replaced. We do our automatic RMAs. Everything's fully customizable, so Joe's going to have his own lock ins, like it's, it's very in depth. So any questions, please ask me. I don't know if I answered them.
Mike, you had the concern about the length of time, so does that answer some of your questions at all or create other ones for?
Yeah, do we own the cameras that, like, in year eleven?
Yes, sir.
After the ten years, there are cameras?
You own the cameras tomorrow. So if there were, if you purchase the cameras and you, you'll never lose your investment with Rambus and hardware. So if you, you know, you go three years and you say, we don't want to do this anymore, or ten years, we unlock those cameras. You guys can do what you're doing right now. Although I will say that what you're doing right now is not working. You know, the question isn't, again, the hardware, it's the software behind it. How do you figure out if kids are having fights? How do you, you know, track people through your environment? God forbid, somebody comes to the school with ill intent. How do you recognize that? You know, weapons detection, things like that, that we're, we're really good at. So car comes up, you can get license plate recognition quickly. You know, parent that's not allowed to be in the school district, student that might have been expelled that's not allowed to be there anymore. Our facial recognition is amazing. You can upload, you know, Megan's Law database to see sexual offenders, make sure they're not coming into your school. You can get notifications. You know, Jim Rich's SRO officers can get notifications for people that aren't supposed to be here.
Is it common to pay that licensing fee upfront?
Yeah, so, and I did give some, some districts around your districts that are working with Rambus right now. And some that have signed a tenure really recently. So we always try to go for ten or five typically, just so it doesn't, you know, no offense, but have to come up to board and continue to, to do this game here. But ten years is really nice just because it coincides again with that hardware warranty. If you sign a three year and you decide, hey, we're not going to go, that warranty does go away. So once we unlock the cameras, the hardware is yours for sure. You're never going to lose that investment, but the warranty is, is no.
I guess my concern is if you pay the five hundred plus thousand dollars for the licensing fee upfront and your business, hopefully it doesn't have, goes out of business, a year from now, you're out.
Sure.
A lot of money.
Yeah, so I can't give you any kind of, you know, bankrupt. If, if, if Rambus was to go bankrupt, that would be the only case. But if we got purchased and Rambus just got another sixty million dollars in funding, we're not going to be going bankrupt. Worst case scenario, we would get purchased. I don't see that happening. Our founders are very, we're going IPO. So I, I, I think the risk is very small and it's definitely outweighs the cost savings for the ten year license. If you look at the price from ten years, five years, or three years, it's, it's, it's night and day. So in five years, you're not paying that lump sum, lump sum again to get another five year license. You're done for ten years. And then at that point, you can reevaluate and renew all your licensing, look at new cameras you need. Another question that was asked, if we have a camera and it goes out, or maybe we want the newer, shinier camera, can we get rid of that camera and get a new one and keep the license? Absolutely, and that hardware still is yours. So with this project, you're going to get the cameras that are on the sheet. You also have like cold storage for cameras. If a camera goes down, you, you hook a new one back up, all included. As far as training, we do offer constant training. So you have me, again, I live in Edinburgh. I've been to the, I've been to, been here like four times, five times for walkthroughs. I don't know how many meetings we've had, but my SE is a guy named Trevor. Trevor just had a baby, or I would have made him come here. Well, he didn't have a baby, his wife had a baby. You also have your own support. So a lady named Janie Lovejoy would be your support for training. So we would do onsite training. So theoretically, you guys purchase Rambus, you purchase a ten year. We come in, we can train anyone that you guys elect to do the install. Installing these things is really easy. I have an eight year old that could do it. It's as simple as unplugging the old camera, plugging the new one back into POE. They come pre-registered and then trainings, you know, quarterly trainings, however often you guys want them. You know, we have one-on-one individual remote trainings with Janie or in person, you know, quarterly, if you want me to come do that every quarter.
Aaron, I think. Go ahead there. Aaron, I think the question really, really at hand was, is can you approve it? Can we elect to go with a ten year contract, but make the payments once a year for the next ten years as compared to the full payment upfront?
No, sir, it would be a payment upfront. The only way to do that would be if you, you know, we could go through a third party company, take that cost and break it down to three or five years. So that lump sum would then be broken out over a three or five year, but that would be a third party company.
Aaron, that's exactly what I was thinking. I'd be a lot more comfortable with paying sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year because you sell us a ten year contract, your work is done. You're not hungry. You know, if we're signed up for a three year, you're going to come back and say, geez, you know, here's our newest bells and whistles. We'd like to have you for another three years. To front load a contract like this for ten years is great for your company. It's great for you. I don't think it's the greatest thing for us.
Okay.
I would much rather pay per year and keep somebody hungry is the term they use in sales. You know, when somebody's hungry, they, they support you. When, when, you know, I buy you a Mercedes or a, you know, a Lamborghini, you're good to go. That's a ten year Lamborghini. You're, you know, you're going to be driving it. You know, if I put you in a Chevy, you're going to be coming around and say, you know, this Chevy's three years old. I'd like to get a new one. That's just my, it's nothing against you, but I just.
No.
To front load six hundred thousand dollars on software is not wise.
But the, so that's fine. The other option though is going to be in three years, paying that entire amount for the software renewal, which will be way more than what it would be to do ten.
Why would it be way more? Because it's the same software.
Well, if you look at the cost of the tenure, which Aaron sent out, so you have all of your cameras at that cost. If you look at the cost of the three year and you multiply that by two, it's more than the cost of the tenure.
Right, right, you know, yeah, it's substantially higher. But if we broke it out and we were just paying a hundred thousand dollars a year for software, even though in ten years, that's a million dollars, I'd be way more comfortable with spending a hundred thousand dollars a year for software than, than paying the million dollars and paying six hundred thousand dollars ahead of time. Because, you know, we, we made the investment in the cameras. If after two years, we say, hey, these are cameras there are, we want to get somebody else's software, we're only into you for two hundred thousand dollars. We haven't committed to the entire money. We front load you, the money, the money's in your pocket. And I just think that going out ten years with, with, for software in today's day and age, it's six hundred. Now, I get the, the reoccurring revenue. You know, and a lot of times you buy something, and in my business, I buy something and the value is ten thousand dollars. They would like to get a thousand dollars a year, as they call it, for a maintenance fee or whatever, because that's reoccurring revenue. But I'm not front loading it by the double the money by a year. Here's twenty thousand dollars, I'm good to go for ten years. I just, as a technical person, I can't approve going out ten years and spending six hundred thousand dollars on software. That's me. That's, that's, that's all I could say.
So what I was talking about is, you know, if you, you can take whatever license cost you want and, and if it's three, five, or ten, we can go to a third party.
But can't you tell me that licensing for six hundred cameras is eighty dollars per camera per year? And so therefore, if you break it down, that means that camera costs are, are costs are a hundred thousand dollars a year for software. Now, I understand that that would mean it's a million dollars a year. But you know what? Ten percent interest on six hundred thousand dollars is sixty grand. I'd rather pay for this yearly than front load it with a six hundred thousand dollars for software.
Well, we couldn't, you know, we can't do it that way. It would either be three, five, it's just our licensing terms.
But what's wrong with one year? If I told you that tonight, we're going to buy this for one year and we'll pay you, or, or the deal's off, you're going to walk away and say, okay, no, we won't do it. The old saying is you could do anything. We could do it for one year, we can do it for two, we can do it for three, or you could do it for fifty. You know, I, I understand, you know, it's a better price of ten years, but you can't tell me you can't do it for one year. If I say, I want to buy these cameras, I want a one year license, you're going to say no?
No, what I'm saying is the terms that you guys have in front of you, three, five, and ten. I can't split those up and have you pay that every year. If you're telling me you want to look at licensing on all these cameras for a one year contract and then renew every year, I can do that. It'll be a completely different quote. and then renew every year, I can do that. It'll be a completely different quote and it will be far more expensive than a three, a five or a 10.
Why is the reason it is far more expensive? Why?
Well, we don't. So if you have a three or five or a 10, we're going to discount that greater than a one-year.
Right. But you know, you can buy a car for cash or if you go to see a car salesman, he doesn't want to sell you a car for cash. He wants you to finance it because that's the name of the game. Because it's, I get it. It's reoccurring revenue. But I can't in good faith say that we're going to hand you $600,000 for software for 10 years. That's just not wise decision. This is only my personal opinion, but if you came back and said it's a hundred thousand dollars a year. And then you say, well, Mr. Kobelka, that means it's a million dollars in 10 years versus 600,000. Okay. It's $400,000 more, but so be it. That's what it is. There's got to be a number there. You know, we had borrowed $20 million a few years ago and we paid $8 million in interest to borrow that 20 because we were, we were bumping down the pants. That's foolish. And to me, to front-load something for $600,000 for software on a 10-year deal is foolish. I'd rather look at it yearly because software changes all the time.
Well, fair enough, but the software that does change will automatically be uploaded into your console. So the software is not going to change. Um, it's going to be, uh, it's going to be the same. It's just going to be a question of price, how much the district's going to pay for the software. If you do yearly and you pay for it over the next 10 years, that license is going to be far more than buying a 10-year license.
But you're saying that if, as new functionality occurs and, um, you have better resolution, you have new things, uh, technology emerges. That new technology is downloaded.
Automatic.
Automatically. So we do get the advantage.
Yes.
Of any new technology.
Yep. Anything new that comes into our console, you're going to get immediately. A great, a great example of this is mask detection. So PPE detection was a big deal, not so much anymore. Don't see anyone wearing a mask, but myself included. But one of the things that we wanted during COVID and our customers wanted was knowing when people are and are not wearing masks. So we, we threw that into the console, automatically went to all of our, our customers. You can see them in your console now. You know, you guys have, um, some testing devices. So anything that comes in, you guys are going to get, there's no charge. Um, any software update, there's no charge. We're not coming in again and downloading anything on your computer. It's all done by the cloud. You can access your Rumbus console from any web-enabled device. So any smartphone, computer, um, you can check cameras. We can set up different policies. It's a hundred percent customizable.
A good question on the licensing fees. So one year versus 10 years, you're locking in 10, one year. What has been the historic increase of those fees each year if you're to do it? 10%, 5%?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you. I don't, you know.
Guess what I'm saying, Mike, is it's not really as simple as a hundred thousand a year for 10 years, a million dollars. Maybe a million and a half extra or something, you know?
Oh, yeah.
As the time you get 100,000, 105,000 next year, 110,000, 120, by the end of the 10th year, you may be looking at 225,000.
Sure. But Gary, you remember when a cell phone was a hundred dollars a month and now they're 50?
I mean, I remember when my.
It was back then, it's oftentimes too, you know, I mean.
I got you.
Uh, so I, I get it, you know, but again, if you're hungry, you, you, you work the deal. If, if, if we do a one-year deal for you and then you come back next year and you say, you know, we're not overly happy. We're done. We own the cameras. We paid the $400,000. You got your 100 grand and, and giddy up. But when I give you $600,000 upfront, it's like, we're good to go.
Yeah.
That, that's my only, that's my only, putting my business hat on. It sounds like you've got a great product, et cetera.
We do.
It's just foolish to lock into something like this for 10 years in my personal opinion.
I mean, I'll just, I'll, I remember when my Netflix subscription cost me $10 a month and now it's 30 some, you know? Software subscriptions aren't going down. Uh, the analytics and the things that we're working on today are not going to get less expensive. I promise you that. So if you, if you guys, you know, are like, hey, we're going to do a one year, we go back to the drawing board, we get you guys one-year pricing, um, with different partners, I promise you that the school district will pay more over the course of even five years than you would with a 10-year license.
But when the second vendor comes in, said, you just spent a year with these guys and we'd like to come in, we'd like to get your business, then you've got competition. So if you look at it on that side too.
I, I mean, we, we bring in vendors on Peppum. So it wasn't, you know, you're not going to have a huge discrepancy in cost, regardless of how many vendors you bring in, um, when you're purchasing off of a contract. So it's a little bit different dealing with SLED, you know, education customers or, um, if you're purchasing off of a contract like TIPS or Peppum or you're using Co-Stars, you're not going to see like a gigantic wave in cost change. Um, I understand what you're saying about keeping, uh, keeping the, the people hungry, the vendors hungry, but I promise you, you know, licensing is not going to decrease in price. As technology evolves, it's going to get more expensive. I'll also say that the one thing that, and the, the reason I believe Rumbus is they're moving forward is the partnership aspect of Rumbus. And you can ask any of our long-term customers, you can ask some of our short-term customers, what we care about is partnership. Um, and like I said, I, I happen to have family that goes to this district. Um, it's near and dear to my heart, you know? This is our most valuable asset. We want to keep our children safe and this is a great tool to do it. It doesn't matter to me what license term you guys go with. I think it would be foolish to go to a one-year, um, when you have five-year in front of you or 10-year, but that's going to be up to the board to decide.
So the cameras are open architecture. Other software can eat in this information and do a similar?
No. So if we unlock the cameras, so if we move forward and the cameras get unlocked, your option will be, um, NVRs, DVRs, localized storage. So you're not going to be running software on the backend of the camera.
Is, is there other, other, other software providers that we could go in our cloud?
No.
I don't believe that. How, how could that possibly?
Our kid, yeah. I mean, we're, you're not going to be able to run, run other software on the cameras. You would have.
Not on the camera, but the, the backdoor so, or the, uh, backend software that interfaces with the person, right? You have, you're just feeding video, right? And you're using the software in your cloud.
Correct. Yep.
So that's the cloud is what we're paying for.
Well, you're paying for, um, the retention, the features and really the UI. So your console, you know, when you log in and you see the camera feeds, if you did access control or vape detectors or whatever, those are all going to be in there. They're a hundred percent customizable. If we unlock the cameras, you're not going to be then taking and running another software over top of it. It would be like a, um, on-premise video solution. So you would have your feeds, you would run them. I mean, you could do like localized software, but you wouldn't have another cloud archive, like, uh, cloud architectures.
Is there another vendor that could run that software in the cloud? Are you guys the only one that uses these cameras?
Cameras? It would be us. Yeah.
So you have a closed architecture on your cam. We can't take the hardware and apply it to another software.
No.
Not an open.
We would unlock the cameras so that you would be able to use them, um, for like an on-premise solution, but you wouldn't be able to run a different software in the background.
Once the camera's unlocked though, I mean, you know, when you buy a cell phone, it's $1,200. But if you sign up with Verizon, you pay them $30 a month, it's yours. But if you get the phone unlocked, then you can go to any vendor you want because it's.
Sure. Yeah. So I guess to expound on it, it would be like, um, we unlock the cameras and you guys bought some sort of localized takeover device to take those camera feeds and put them into a different, um, software company. Like if we're, if you're taking it over, but you wouldn't be able to stream it out, you would have to take like those IP-based streams into a takeover solution, like a box that's like an NVR and then manipulate that into the cloud.
Couldn't you stream them out? If the camera, you're, these aren't proprietary cameras, right? You're using.
They are proprietary to our software. When we unlock them, they're not, but you're not going to be, there's no other software company. It's not us. There's not another company right now anyway, that is going to be able to take those direct feeds into their console. You'd have to purchase like a takeover box.
I mean, there's NDI is one of your standards. There's video cameras have a standard and anybody can take them in the cloud. I don't believe for a minute that there's nobody else that can do this in the cloud. Unless you've got them locked down and you're saying, we will not allow these to stream. Is that what you're saying?
No, I mean, we, we will unlock the cameras. They're not unlocked to the ONVIF standard. They're unlocked so that you can push them into a localized NVR. If you wanted to them, stream them onto something else, I believe you would make, need like a takeover solution. You would need a box to stream them in.
I guess I find that concerning from the 10-year solution. Cause I know in my other role, we have had open source hard access and cameras and we have switched from softwares to softwares and all the devices have moved into whichever company.
Yeah.
We use for the proprietary software. The physical hardware is interchangeable on the different platforms. You're telling me your hardware is not interchangeable.
Pretty sure any hardware would need a takeover box to get it to go. Like if, if you had IP cameras that you were trying to get us to host, we would need a takeover box to get them into our software. So.
Well, takeover box isn't a big deal. I mean.
Uh, yeah. I mean, it's just a box that's going to stream your feeds in and then push them to a different.
Not a million dollar box?
No, no, no. You just need multiple.
It's going to make that statement, but I mean, the old saying is I stayed at a Holiday Inn Express. I'm, I'm a video and television engineer and I'm familiar with NDI and HTTP and you know, uh, all the, all the different things. I just got back from the Caribbean. We stream things to the Caribbean, but there's other vendors out there. And if you get locked in or if you pay, not, not that you get locked in, you know, we could say in three years, we're not happy with these guys. We have the cameras, but you just spent $650,000 or whatever it is, 600, 610, and it's gone. These guys don't care. They'd like, oh, you want to go to another vendor? Go right ahead. Cause they've got their $600,000, right? You know, you're giving it to them upfront.
Well, Mike, I, I think that's maybe a bad characterization. These guys don't care. I think they, they, they care.
Well, once they got $600,000, they don't care very much because it's managed in the bank.
I, I think the, the more realistic scenario is how long is, have you been in business? How big is your market cap? And what is the likelihood that you don't get bought out? I know you talk about strength, but let's be realistic. Companies are getting bought like.
Sure.
Change pants.
Sure.
And they come and go. And once they're bought, they then become a legacy project that is no longer upgraded. It's just supported because legally they have to support. That is the true risk of going 10 years is you will, Rumbus still be Rumbus in 10 years.
Sure.
That, that's the, that's the unknown. And I think that's the, the part that concerns me the greatest is if you're not, if you, the cameras will always be sorted, the software will always be supported, but you're five through 10, you may be another company and they're just going to keep it viable, which is very common in technologies.
Aaron, what's your, what's your topic?
We did a five year. After we get to the fifth year, is there an option to sign one years at that point?
Yeah, you could do one, three, five or 10 again. So after three years.
The, the other part of this, obviously it's not all just licensing. There is a design functionality that is a big chunk of this. That you're going in and that's why you're spreading it out of a multiple. You just did a one-year upfront. You're going to take the entire design. Is that a part of your licensing?
No. Yeah. Do you mean like the walkthroughs we did and camera placements and stuff?
Actual building of the net, building of the.
Oh, there's no, I mean, literally we, we plug the, you know, your installers will plug the cameras in. They come pre-registered. They automatically fall into your console. Well, I mean, there's been a ton of work to bring Rumbus up. Sure. I mean, we've been around since 2017. Um, you know, huge, you know, yeah.
Someone programs all the cameras. It's awkward to say this camera is going to be this building in this location.
Not exactly. So, um, we'll do, we did site maps, um, before we send the cameras out, you know, we, Joe and I worked together to figure out what camera is going where. And the reasoning for that is more when you're tracking people through your ecosystem, you want to know what cameras where. Um, but yes.
Here's a question for you. Can we have a non-compete with our employee? That, uh, now he's familiar with it and who's to say you're going to hire him to come work for you and, and take him away from us?
I'd love to have Joe. I won't, I, I won't sign anything. Yeah, no.
In all seriousness, I'm saying like, you know, you'd be rating our employee. So I mean, can we do a non-compete? You're not going to hire our person away?
Uh, I think that's a little off the top. Yeah. I mean, so.
I don't think so at all. That's the way business works. You hire people and it's proprietary and you know, he's going to learn to do this. And you're going to say, hey, you want to come down to Pittsburgh because we got, uh, we got schools down there and he's going to giddy up.
We're at a Sacramento, California. I cover, um, a really large area. So, um, you know, Joe would have to, uh, you know, fight me and he'd probably win, but, uh, there's, you know, really, uh, unless he was like really hungry. No, I don't think we would sign a non-compete to, to not, uh, to not take Joe.
If I can go back to something that you said earlier, you talked about other, um, districts that have used this. Um, can you just give me a ballpark idea of whether they sign?
Mm-hmm.
Do you sign more three, five or 10 years?
It's mostly five and 10. Uh, I typically don't do three or one just because of cost. Now the, the one-year licensing I have done has been for a charter school network. Um, and they are, they just don't know what's, you know, uh, and the, the company that provides the cameras only gets one-year contracts from the charter schools that they work in. But for the most part, it's either five or 10.
Thank you.
Yep.
And does the district want a 10-year contract simply for savings over time?
And that was one of the primary factors. I mean, recognizing, I mean, really this decision, it, it sounds like everybody's, I, I'm bored with Rumbus themselves. It's really your risk tolerance, uh, that we're having right now. I mean, there is sizable risk, uh, that we can't overlook being years five through 10, right? Uh, I mean, but there's risk in all these. It, it just technology, a 10-year, uh, commitment does carry a lot of risk. And you're going to pay more i- if you go with the lesser term, right? You're discounting. It, it's no different than financing anything as you're going through with this. It is shorter term you're going to have, right? But, um, it, it, so overall, I think for me, I, I guess to keep this conversation moving along as we're trying to get it going here is it, it sounds like everybody's aligned with Rumbus being, it's the risk tolerance of it being, how many years are we willing to commit money? Given the fact that Rumbus doesn't allow for, uh, signing a 10-year deal that makes annual payments on an annual basis, right? Uh, it, it, it's where we, it sounds like we're really finding ourselves. And I don't mean to put words in anybody's mouth, but uh, i- if that really is the concern about risk, it, my suggestion would be to really look at the five-year or the three-year deal, uh, as we're looking at here. It might cost us a little bit more money, but there, there's just not as much risk in terms of overall cash longer term.
I, I'd be more comfortable with that because we had a contractor over at the, um, Asbury Elementary School, and then we had a over a million dollar problem and everybody kept pointing the finger, well, it was this one, it was this one. And when it was all said and done, they were out of business and we, we ate a million dollars because of the way the, um, flashing was done, uh, on the, on the parapet basically. And they said, well, okay, they did it, but the company's out of business. So, um, I, I would be much more comfortable with a three, would consider a five and a 10 to me is just not good.
Attorney Senate, if we wanted to change this from the 10 to a, a smaller and vote on it, can we amend the, uh?
Be a motion to amend.
I'd like to make a motion. We amend to a five-year contract.
Second.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that, can I make another motion? No.
Well, if we already have an amendment, why don't we act on the amendment and let's see how that goes. And then if that doesn't pass, then maybe you can make another amendment.
Okay. So first we need, we have a motion and a second. So, um, so all in favor, and we'll do a roll call vote on this one, changing to, uh, a five-year.
Under from a 10.
Five-year term from a 10-year term. So if I get a roll call vote on it. So this, this would be a yes vote would say approve the five-year term, just to amend.
Right.
Mr. Brink?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Philbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kobelka?
No.
Mr. Lindner?
Yes.
Ms. Nushim?
Yes.
Ms. Pasquale?
Yes.
Mr. Winchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Winchell?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that motion has been amended. So now we need to vote on.
Unless there's an, another amendment that's going to be brought forward.
Okay. Is there another amendment that brought forward?
I, I'd like to make an amendment that we do a three-year term.
Okay. So there's a, a motion to have a second. Have a motion to move it to a three-year. Do I have a second?
I'm confused. I don't.
This is.
We just amended from 10-year to five-year.
Correct. There's this now a request.
That if we request a three-year, is five-year off the table?
Correct. But we don't have a second on the motion. So right now.
So it's not going to move forward without a second.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll ask one more time. Is there a second? There's no second that, that amendment.
Now we've been thought on.
Now we go back to vote on the five-year. Right? So, so it's been amended. It's the five-year for the camera project. Have a motion for the five-year.
Motion.
We have, oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second. And now it requires five-year. We voted on the amendment. We approved the amendment. Now it's back to the original motion with a five-year term.
Right. Just don't need a motion in a second. No, we have it. We have that already. Okay. We have it. So let's take a roll call vote on that then.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Philbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kobelka?
No.
Mr. Lindner?
Yes.
Ms. Nushim?
Yes.
Ms. Pasquale?
Yes.
Mr. Winchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Winchell?
Yes.
Mr. Brink?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, that motion passes for a five.
Thank you for being here tonight and answering our questions for us. I know it, it can be, you know, hard being put on the spot like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We got one guy that's hard, really hard on people sometimes.
We look forward to working with you.
Mike will be our liaison.
I, I guess the salesman of the year trip to California is not so guaranteed anymore, but, um, Mr. Kobelka will be the liaison.
For that project.
Okay, that concludes the, uh, finance and operations report. Moving on to item nine, superintendent's report. Dr. Kavanaugh.
So in the superintendent's report, I added an item, which is the NWIRC visit to Congress. And the reason that needed to take place is because we got last-minute notification, and we thought it was an excellent opportunity to put our district at the national level. So Bob Zaruta from NWIRC reached out to Kyle Buckholz last week on Thursday evening. So Kyle immediately sent it out. I unfortunately didn't read it till very late Thursday night about going to DC to the, uh, visit with members of Congress and possibly some White House staffers. And they'd be there on March, um, 4th, 5th, and 6th. And since we don't have another meeting until then, I want to add this evening, I don't have the exact cost. I believe the exact cost is it's right around $3,000 would cost the district. We thought this was a wonderful opportunity to allow Kyle to go. So I appreciate the board letting us bring it forward this evening.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, what an amazing opportunity. Not only is it for Kyle, but for a representative from our district. That is incredible. And if Valerie Myers is out there in the listening audience, I must suggest a, um, follow-up article when Kyle gets back.
That'd be awesome. Good point.
One question. This is in March or September? This document says March.
But the motion.
The motion says September 4th through 7th.
You know, March.
Okay. So then we need to amend the motion.
Okay. Bottom amendment. Get a, a motion to amend, um, under superintendent's report from, uh, September 4th through 7th to March 4th. Have a motion.
Motion.
Second, second.
Any discussion on that? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
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 Ginsnay. Okay, now getting back and let's do a vote for the, uh, trip for Kyle to Washington DC for March or through March 7th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ginsnay? It passes.
Thank you.
I'd love to hear what happens when he comes back.
Could we do a non-compete with Kyle so that they don't try to keep him in DC?
Impossible. Okay, moving on to item 10, new business. Any new business? Item 11, slisters report.
So, uh, section 11.01, as we discussed at the, uh, committee, the whole meeting, uh, we are requesting the rescission of the 2024 Title IX Policies 103 and 104, um, as a result of the decision by the United States District Court in Eastern District of Kentucky, which vacated the entirety of the 2024 Title IX rule. And we will continue to operate under the 2020 Title IX rule.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve 11.01?
Motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Bring in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ginsnay, motion passes.
And then, uh, 11.02, um, was requesting, uh, the appointment of special counsel, but, uh, I need to provide and acquire additional information, so I'm not asking for any action on that tonight.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Moving on to item 12, remarks. First is 12.01, Mill Creek Parks and Rec. Ms. Nusham and Ms. Pasquale.
We met, uh, with the Mill Creek Parks and Recreation, um, apartment on February 5th, and, um, learned quite a bit of information. The capital budget for 2025 includes the purchase of Lakewood Park at a price of 150,000. The closing has been delayed until one of, um, we can, the, the Mill Creek Township School District can get a quick claim deed for a parcel that is still in the Mill Creek School authority name. And, um, uh, other budgeted items is, um, at Asbury Barn, they'll be reciting at a cost of 250,000, and a DCNR comprehensive plan in which the entire park system in Mill Creek will be evaluated, and it'll occur at a cost of 114,800, of which 50% is grant-funded. The township has budgeted 3,281,500 for a possible purchase of a community center acquisition. Um, other projects include getting, uh, out of a long-term lease for the Mount Clair Park, which is by the Old Montessori School and Curry Field. Curry Field is located behind New York Town Center and is used by NYAA. The township will be bringing utilities to that field so that in the future bathrooms can be built. Uh, rental revenue as of, um, 2525 for Asbury Barn and Shelter for the Veterans Park and Zook Shelter is 46% of the total revenue of last year, which is shows the, the renewed and increased interest. In 2024, revenue from the Mill Creek Golf and Learning Center was 93,733, which was a 34% increase over the previous year. Parks and Recreation is applying for a DCNR grant to add three holes to the course, bringing it to a nine-hole course. The township will also apply for a grant to connect sidewalks on, uh, West Sixth Street to Scott Park. The, um, Mill Creek Township hired Ballard King to perform an operational study for a Mill Creek Community Center. The study should be completed in April and will include a market analysis of programs available and demand from programming from residents of Mill Creek Township, as well as the operating costs associated with those recommended programs. A public meeting is anticipated in April to review the recommendations, and the report will be available on the township website. The Zemzem Shrine property is being analyzed as a potential site for the community center. The property is over 44 acres and is within a 15-minute drive by the vast majority of residents in Mill Creek. The study will look at the condition of the major systems in the building and provide an estimate of the cost to repair. Mill Creek plans on notifying the owner by the end of May if it's interested in the property. Parks and Recreation will use the recommended programming from their study and look at the shrine property to see if it's a good fit.
Thank you. Thank you. 12.02, uh, PSBA, Mr. Brink?
Nothing to report.
12.03, school board remarks. Any board member remarks?
Yes.
Wanted to reiterate what Chris Huber said from the MEF. Scholarship applications are due March 17th. They are light so far. She noted there are many that have not had anyone apply. In particular, if we can work with our tech school students for Mill Creek, there are two scholarships specifically for them. One has zero applicants at this given moment. The other one is very lightly applied to. Uh, there's money for our students. Please help encourage them to apply. I know that they are all last minute. They will probably all come in at 11:59 on the 16th, but please help them not underestimate.
And a reminder, Mike, that's on GoingMary.com. It, uh, allows you to not only apply for MEF scholarships, but any scholarship that is on the GoingMary app. So it's not just specific to us.
Thank you, Jason.
And also, uh, I think the board members this Thursday, Mike, is the.
Right. This Thursday is the Board of 99, uh, meeting at the Erie County Technical School. Uh, we were all invited, so hopefully I will see many of you there.
Yep.
Um, uh, last I heard, over a third of the board members were attending, uh, late last week. So I know there was a push to try to get closer to 50%. So.
Yeah, I think we got, we got a good representation from Mill Creek. So that's great.
When is that again, uh?
It is.
Thursday?
Thursday this week. Tours are at 11 and in the afternoon.
Thank you as well. Any other board remarks?
Dr. Kavanaugh.
Okay, so I have a couple of remarks this evening. The first one is to let everybody know that we recently received the Great Schools PA recognition. So the Great Schools PA designation recognizes Pennsylvania public schools that provide students with access to rigorous programming, are community-centric, demonstrate financial well-being, and display resilience. Schools are awarded a ribbon valid for a four-year term through an application and review process. So a special thank you to Leanna, who helped put all the information together, gathering information from our curriculum department, from our business office, from student services, submitted it all, and in February, we became one of the Great Schools PA. So congratulations. My next one is that McDowell will be co-hosting the PMEA Region 2 Chorus Festival with Prep on March 22nd at 2 o'clock. So more information will come out about that, but that's a nice honor for us to be co-hosting that event. Recently, we had Chloe Zacharol become our first girls District 10 wrestling champion in program history. And best of luck to Chloe when she goes on March 1st down to the Western Regionals at North Allegheny High School. So one of our girls in the first year of the program is doing outstanding. Um, congratulations to our boys' basketball team who won the D10 championship last Thursday by defeating Erie. And they get a home game, which is unusual for this level playoffs for inter-districts, tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at Paul Gollum Gymnasium. So hopefully they'll get a good crowd there tomorrow night. And best of luck to our swimming team. Our swimming championships for D10 are held and actually held at Spire Institute in Ohio on Friday and Saturday. So best of luck to that program this weekend. And that's it for me this evening.
Hey. Thank you, Dr. Kavanaugh. So moving on to item, uh, 13, adjournment. Next regularly scheduled meetings of the Mill Creek Township Board of School Directors will be held March 10th, 2025. Many meetings begin at 6:00 PM. Three committee meetings held one right after another. Instructional Student Services, Personnel Policy, Finance and Operations Committee. I mean, of the whole as, uh, as needed, the committee of the whole meeting will typically begin immediately following the last committee meeting for the evening. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Ever second. Any discussion? Very none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ginsnay? You're adjourned.